I'm going to record.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, roll call please.
I have a job. Craig Borba?
Present.
Juanita Garner, not yet. Al Jones is running late. David Norgard?
Here.
Deborah Swart?
Here.
Three people here, we do have a quorum.
Okay, then let's continue.
Bring your microphone on.
Oh.
So yeah, please turn on your microphone, sorry. You can do it, but it's not a big deal, we could just leave them all out, you know, if we wanted to.
I have a motion to accept the agenda. I move.
Second.
First and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And since. But a room on number three, public comments. Is there anybody on your line that would like to make a public comment?
I mean, it's Nancy, she will do a report with the friends, but and.
Robert. Nancy's up.
Actually, yes.
Alright, consent agenda. Can I have a motion to consent agenda?
Move to consent, uh, move to accept as presented?
I have a second.
Second.
There are no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's move down to, uh, room number five, administrator's report. Uh, first one on there is five A, Friends of the Palm Springs Library, and is Nancy there?
Nancy Morrison, are you on the line? You should be able to talk.
Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, Nancy.
Okay, good. Good evening, everybody. Um, so the Friends recently had a architectural and art for modernism week book sale. We had a great turnout. We only did it for, uh, three hours from ten to one, and we made about thirty-seven hundred dollars. So that was awesome. Uh, we also are having our upcoming holiday boutique. I hope that all of you will attend. We're probably gonna have, um, sixty plus, uh, baskets that we're gonna be selling and, um, you know, we always have books to sell as well. So hopefully all of you will attend, and we're planning on having a big turnout for that. Last year it was very successful. And if any of you want to donate a basket, you're more than willing to do that. Last year at the bazaar, several people said that they would like to donate a basket, whether they make it or buy it, whatever. And so we're gonna send out an email in the coming week to our membership, so if anybody would like to do that this year, they're more than welcome to. And I'm sure that Jeannie will be talking about the Palm Springs Speaks event that just had, uh, with Donna Brazil, which was very successful. Um, let's see, that about wraps it up.
Uh, Nancy, the date, uh, the date of the Christmas? Go ahead.
Uh, December fourteenth.
Any other questions for Nancy at this time? Okay, here are none. Uh, thank you Nancy, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is five B, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation. Uh, Peter?
Thank you. Thanks for giving me time to report. Uh, first wanted to just talk a little bit about Pride on the Page, which was the weekend of October twentieth. Everything happened on Sunday this year. Uh, first of all, I want to take an opportunity to shout out to Julie. Uh, Julie was so incredibly helpful to our effort to put on a great program, and I just can't tell you how appreciative we are of the work that she does to help us. So Julie, thank you so much. Um, as, as all of you know, Pride on the Page is not intended to be a fundraiser. It's an awareness-raising activity. We feel that it's getting the foundation a lot of recognition in the community. We had wonderful author panels of over twenty-five different authors who, uh, spoke during the afternoon, and then in the evening. So during the afternoon, we had, uh, about three hundred people attending the various panels. In the evening, we had Beth Lapidus and Alec Mappa and Tim Bagley, or Beth and the Boys, uh, comedians. And, uh, w- we struggled to, to sell tickets. That was a paid ticket event, and, uh, certainly was not as successful as the daytime panels. But, uh, everybody who was in attendance said they really enjoyed it. It was a wonderful program all the way around. So again, not a fundraiser, but an opportunity for people to know more about us, the foundation. Um, right now, we're in the midst of getting ready for our year-end, uh, solicitation of individuals. Uh, we're doing two different approaches. One is, we have about two hundred previous donors to the foundation, and they are receiving a personalized letter from foundation board members. The foundation board members are coming together on November twenty-first for a letter signing party, and all of those previous donors are gonna have a letter signed and, uh, with a personal note from our foundation board members going out. In addition to our previous board members, uh, our previous donors, we're trying to identify new donors also. And what we're doing is, we have worked with an organization called Carl Blumen Associates, who are, uh, specialists in library direct mail campaigns. They've identified six thousand households in Palm Springs, in the valley, who, uh, have the most likelihood of donating to a public library. They mailed out a solicitation on our behalf. It's going out this week, actually, and we're hoping to receive, uh, responses from that. Probably, you know, a good couple of hundred individuals who might respond, who would then be our donors, hopefully forever. So both of those things are happening this fall. We'll do a second solicitation of individuals in April during what is called Library Giving Day. And so those are our two big fundraising activities of the year for individuals. In addition, we do an event in the spring called Cocktails on the Page, which will take place at one of our board members' homes. We'll have an author on site, we'll have cocktails and hors d'oeuvres, and sell tickets to that. So those will be our major fundraising activities for this year. Uh, wanted to let you know that, uh, we are in the process of, we've finished really revising our bylaws for the foundation. The foundation's bylaws are ten years old and haven't been changed since those initial ones were created. So Bill Wiley, our current board president, took this under his wing to really get these bylaws up to date. And at our November board meeting on the, uh, fourteenth, we will be approving new bylaws for the foundation, just tweaks. It's not gonna be a huge major change, but you know, a number of things that had to change just for logistic reasons. So, uh, ten years is a, a long time for bylaws not to be revised, and we're happy that that's gonna happen. Um, also just wanted to let you know, we're incredibly grateful to the grant that the trustees made for our public awareness campaign last spring. We have some funds left from that initial grant, and we're gonna be working again with Kyle and company to, uh, do some additional public awareness over the next six months. Um, we want to do general public awareness at this point. It isn't gonna focus on the renovation, uh, because as many of you know, we're kind of quietly doing some behind-the-scenes work to start to raise money for that. Um, but we're hoping that the general public awareness can focus on what the purpose of the Library Foundation is, and getting people to understand and be a part of us, and wanting to join the foundation as a donor. Uh, last thing I wanted to mention is, many of you may have seen in, uh, the media this week, that, uh, a woman by the name of Jane Lichenhoff left, uh, a four-and-a-half million dollar bequest to the Community Foundation. The Community Foundation owns that asset, but Jane indicated, and by the way, Jane was a hundred and three when she died. She indicated that there were four organizations in town that she wanted to be the beneficiary of the drawdowns from that endowment fund. One of us, one of the organizations was the Library Foundation. I'll be honest and say to you, we do not know why Jane Lichenhoff chose the Library Foundation as one of the four. Our board members did not have a relationship with her, so it may be that her financial advisor somehow knew about the Library Foundation. We're, we're not sure exactly why we were chosen. But here are the logistics of that. So the four-and-a-half million dollars stays at the Community Foundation forever, in perpetuity. The Community Foundation has an investment policy and a distribution policy that they give out a certain percentage of that asset to the beneficiary organizations every year. We've been told that the amount coming to the Library Foundation will probably be between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars annually. That's to begin with. Foundations, community foundations invest the money in such a way that the drawdown typically is less than the amount that the asset appreciates that here. So that asset will continue to grow at the Community Foundation, and we could expect that the drawdown from that would increase in future years. Um, the purpose of that has been specified in Jane's estate, and the purpose of it is to support programs and literary resources at the Palm Springs Public Library. So in a sense, the funds become a pass-through to the foundation. The annual distribution will come to the Library Foundation, and we will then immediately pass that on to the library for Jeannie, the administration, and for you, the trustees, to determine how to spend that in accordance with the, uh, donors' wishes. So that will be starting in the spring, we're told. There was a press release that went out from the Community Foundation a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, tha- that's about all we know about it, and I'm happy to answer questions for you if you have any.
I have a couple of questions, but trustees, any questions? Okay, uh, the first one is, will the meeting be held on November fourteenth? Do you have a meeting?
It's gonna be in the children, uh, we've been told that the, uh, Learning Center is busy on the fourteenth. And so, uh, we've been moved to the children's story hour room, I've been told. Is that right, Jeannie?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
I don't remember mine, but we have a program.
Let's go back to the, the estate. Are you gonna get more particulars on what the restrictions are? Funds that are coming to you?
No.
It's on the bank, right? So I don't, I don't know how much movement you have.
Ti- typically, you know, when, when these types of funds are set up, the donor tries not to be too specific. And so the only specifications that we were given were that these funds should be spent on library programs and literary resources. Those were the exact words used in the will. I would say that keeps it quite open to however the library may choose to use those funds. Um, just about everything you do is gonna be a program for literary resources.
The money will flow to you, so they'll give you a check?
Correct.
They will pass it on to the library, right?
That is, that's correct.
Okay. This is probably not gonna happen, but I have to raise a question. What happens if the foundation no longer ceases to exist?
Well, I guess I've never heard of a community foundation that has folded, so I can't answer your question. Um, I would guess that the assets would have to, i- if that were to happen, my guess is the assets might be distributed among all of the various beneficiaries. But again, I don't think I've ever heard of an example where a community foundation folded.
Well, uh, the community, uh, not the community foundation, I'm talking about the, of a library foundation.
Oh, the Library Foundation?
Yeah.
So, yeah, if the Library Foundation ceased to exist, uh, I'm assuming that the Community Foundation would then look for the alternative place for the funds to go, which would, in all likelihood, be directly to the library.
I'm hoping in some document that'll be specified, in case that happens, because there was a, a period of time where the Public Library Foundation wasn't functioning.
Well, the city, the city does have an, uh, a memorandum of understanding with the foundation, so that if the foundation ever does fold, that all of their resources come back to the library.
Okay, so the library is protected?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, that's part of the agreement with the foundation.
Sure.
Okay, uh, any other questions for Peter? Peter, thanks for sharing good news with us. I appreciate that.
Thanks for making time in your agenda for us.
I can give you a little tidbit of trivia about Jane Lichenhoff.
Please. Oh, let me just. Did you have any questions for Peter?
You can, uh, so, uh, Jane Lichenhoff is the daughter, right, of Mister, I don't know his first name, Mister Lichen, or Carl Lichen. He used to own the, the hardware store, so, right, General Store, the General Store. Uh, she's one of the, she is one of, uh, the pioneer families, uh, the original pioneer family, so she.
On the library.
Oh, she was or he was? He, he was. So, um, that's, he, he's very, um, their family has been, um, devoted to the library since the beginning of all time. And, um, the, uh, she is in our Prickly Pears video series. So if you go to YouTube, look for the Palm Springs Public Library channel, and, um, you can search for, you could search Prickly Pears Palm Springs Public Library, because if you just search Prickly Pears, you're gonna get recipes and stuff. But, um, Prickly Pears is a series, uh, of videos from the eighties that our library staff recorded, uh, of Palm Springs pioneers trying to catch them before they died, and these are terrible videos. They're terrible quality. The, the quali, I mean, they were recorded on the VHS on your shoulder, you know, the camcorders. This, they were, uh, I'm, yes, they were recorded onto VHS, so they're terrible, terrible quality in that way, technologically.
She, she was one of the subjects interviewed?
Yes, her and, uh, and Boo Hoff. So, uh, Boo Hoff and Jane Lichen Kaplan at the time, um, and then we, uh, digitized those and put them on our YouTube channel, so they're free for all to access and, and watch these. Uh, and they're fascinating. There's so many people's names that you've heard, and you can go watch these videos, but, um, their family has had a long history with the library. He was involved in the tram, the looking trail. There's a, there's a plaque for him right outside our community room at the library, library. Mm-hmm, yeah, so, long history, all the library support. And they're, uh, they're, uh, her, I guess, um, family also is, they're part of the historical society, and so long-time, long-time residents and locals.
And extremely generous.
Yes, wonderful, wonderful, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I had to give that tidbit of trivia, but I had to do a search to make sure I was remembering right. I think she was a prickly pear. She was.
Uh, any other questions for Peter? Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Uh, next we're gonna do, uh, room number five C, from the library staff.
Thank you. Uh, like, uh, Nancy Morrison said in the Friends, we were, uh, very happy to have our first, uh, event for Palm Springs Speaks, the speaker series, um, on Tuesday, October twenty-second, just two weeks before this historic election. Uh, we had Donna Brazil there in conversation with, uh, State Senator Tony Atkins, and, uh, the event was wonderful. We had over five hundred attendees. It was a great, uh, great fundraiser for the Friends of the Library. Um, so I wanted to mention that. Um, we, uh, just welcomed three new library assistants to the library, so we have three new employees. They are Robert Hampton, Jesus Ramirez Alba, and Chelsea Bradley. Uh, they are also all three now passport acceptance agents, bringing us to a total of fifteen licensed agents. So we are here to help you if you are a first-time passport applicant, and, uh, appointments are available almost every day at the library. Uh, the light, except for these holiday closures, a nice segue. We will be closed on, um, Monday, November eleventh for Veterans Day. And then for Thanksgiving, we'll be closed November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth at the main library. And Wellwood will be open except for Thanksgiving Day out of those dates. Uh, we also have Santa and Mrs. Claus coming to the library. Every year, it's a tradition, um, Tuesday, December tenth, from four to seven PM. This is a free program. Bring your own camera, dress in your holiday vest, and come get your picture with Santa and Mrs. Claus. It's open to all ages, actually, and pets, I would say, probably so, because pets are welcome at the library on a leash or in a carrier. And then, um, that's all I have, but Julie, do you have any other highlights of programming? We're ramping up our programming. There's some great stuff going on.
Yeah, so we are, um, uh, beginning to restart programming. Um, we have started partnering with the Ossetland Trust last year for lectures, and that went really well, so we'll be having our first one with them on that November fourteenth, um, that Thursday afternoon. Um, we have a couple of author talks coming up. Uh, Janet Davidson is talking on the thirteenth, and then, um, Peter, uh, Bedard is talking on the twentieth. Um, his book is about dealing with stress and mental health and anxiety, so that's something I'm gonna be going to. Um, we're also, um, restarting our series on meditation mindfulness. Um, once a month, we have those, um, and this one is gonna be talking about, um, in kind of an overview or introduction to Reiki, um, and the next month will be about a sound bath and what that's all about, and so on and so on. So every month, we do something different. Um, and, uh, that's been very successful, and of course, we continue with our online, uh, virtual authors, several of those, and our Friday film screenings are this Friday, where we show films in our Learning Center. Um, this, uh, Friday is the Fall Guy, and then the Boys in the Boat. So we have lots of things going on, so there's really something for everybody.
Any announcements regarding speaker, speaker, sir?
No. We were in negotiations with somebody, and, uh, we were having, uh, a date conflict trying to find a place to go, because, uh, cultural centers are very booked up, and we, it was the same week as another event, and that we're, we're, we're working on it. We're very excited, uh, about the opportunities and things that we are looking at, but, uh, answer, short answer, long answer, short answer, no. We'll let you know.
Alright. Uh, any other comments for staff? Questions for staff?
Yeah, that'd be, just a quick question concerning the Thanksgiving closing. Um, will we close Thursday, Friday, but open again on Saturday?
Mm-hmm, yes, open again on Saturday.
Alright.
Oh.
Okay, um, let's go to, uh, room number six, okay?
I thought he was from the U.A. first. Down downstairs, the dog.
Oh, no.
I hate my cat, so is the dog okay? Okay. It's ten months old. She was okay. On the other hand, not. Um, but anyway, on the treasurer's report, there's, again, no major. It stayed relatively the same. We did not have an October meeting, it's just goes back too much. Uh, but we were, um, the change was a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Down at one point five six six, and in September, we were one six. Okay.
Yeah, I can report to the, um, the, um, finance department closed the books for last fiscal year, and, uh, they, uh, did record your, all four of your quarterly interest, uh, income.
That's a nice move.
This has been years of trying to get, get this to, to go smoothly. It's good. We've got some stuff going on with that. Great. Um, I wanted to tell you too, I know, um, uh, we didn't all the time got a chance to talk about this, but, but, there, you'll see a little, uh, item on the front on the balance sheet for nine dollars and nineteen cents.
Mm, yes.
Thanks. I, I know what it is. It is, um, when we allocated last year ten thousand dollars for books, we spent all of it except for nine dollars and nineteen cents. And so when they did the new fiscal year, they carried forward that, that extra money on our purchase order, so they set it aside for us. So I, we just did a, a request today to have that zeroed out. So, because we, we, we could maybe buy one book, but, um, we're fine. So the rest of, all of that rest of that is just setting up the new year, closing out the old year, setting up the new year. The money went, the, the money went exactly as it was supposed to, and it closed, that amount went to you. So I confirmed with finance, it's, it's all exactly right. Yes.
That's questions regarding finance. I have a motion, please.
Who took some treasure before it was presented?
Seconded. Question. There are none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Here. Alright, uh, discussion, action items, uh, A, approve the Palm Springs Program, Free Foundation, and that goes to Peter?
Oh, I muted, sorry.
Oh.
I just, I just muted you.
I agree.
Well, fir- fir- first of all, I'd like to say that our board president, Bill Wiley, um, is very sorry that he's not able to be with you tonight. He was on his way back to Palm Springs with his wife on Monday, when she was injured in transit and actually had a very severe, uh, break in her upper tibia and knee, and they've spent, ever since they've been back, they've spent all their time in emergency rooms and hospitals. They're going to an orthopedic surgeon tomorrow, so apparently it was a, it was a very bad break, and so he sends his apologies. Um, the majority of what was reported there really was the progress that the foundation has made over the last year. We just wanted to report to the trustees that it was the grants that the trustees made to us for both staffing and public awareness that have really contributed to the foundation being able to finally really develop into more of a robust organization, and we're just so incredibly grateful for that. Uh, we've built our board of directors. We have a really good, uh, standing committee structure with committee chairs, which are meeting regularly. We're developing fundraising plans. Uh, we've brought in, uh, an accountant who has automated most of our bill paying and done our monthly statements for us, so we're really trying to get to that point of being a, a much more robust library foundation, so that we can begin raising large amounts of money to help the library. And we just wanted to thank all of you and the trustees for trusting us and for helping to support the work that we do. And we hope that that annual report lays out for you exactly how we feel we've grown and, uh, how the foundation is thriving. All of us on the foundation really feel very good about the progress that's been made this last year. Happy to take any questions you might have about it.
Questions from trustees? Um, in, in the future, if you happen to, and, and you did tonight, um, were successful in acquiring additional funds that were a pleasant surprise, don't wait for your annual report. Feel free to let the trustees know as, uh, you're, you find success in that arena.
Thank you. Good reminder.
Um, there are no comments. I guess I need a, who will motion to accept the report? Yes, David?
Um, I, I answered a question just about the protocol. When will we be approving a report made by the foundation?
We'll just accept it.
Okay, okay. I move to accept the report as presented from the foundation.
Oh, and your partner tonight, second.
Alright, any further discussion? Okay, there are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, I just accepted. They were required to make a report to us, so we.
That's, that sounds good.
Okay, uh, now the more challenging issue is seven B, and has to come up with the calendar for twenty twenty-five.
Yes, um, the, uh, I did not realize, in the past, the way, the easiest way to have your meetings, um, set is to do it once a year, and then as they're set, we don't have to issue, um, notices of cancellation and notice of meeting date change and all of those things. We do it all at once. And if something does come up, obviously, we can do that and make the changes and make the notices, but, um, this is the easiest way to do it, because once it's published and adopted, then it's set, and that is, that is the schedule. Um, so that if we do have a special date, like I, we're gonna have to have something in January, uh, because of the holiday, then, uh, we just adopt it as it, as it stands, and then, uh, that is the meeting date. So then we would just say our next meeting date is maybe January eighth. Uh, uh, because our first meeting day in January is on New Year's Day, and we are closed.
So it's the eighth?
Well, it's up to you.
Oh, it's recommended, it's in your packet, so.
So on the back, uh, the last page, and I made us, uh, I didn't make an eating, I made a wonderful chart. Uh, and so I put in some suggestions, uh, and some, some explanations. In October, um, there are a lot of different Jewish holidays, and it has been suggested to be sensitive to those dates, and so, uh, it's up to us to discuss that and, and talk about this. And if you have any other issues with other, other dates that you might be out of town or, or anything.
I have one. I will be out of town, um, March fifth.
I would like to know concerning the same date that it's Ash Wednesday.
Yes.
For me, that's a conflict.
Yes, okay.
As an Episcopal, it's not a conflict, because you go at eight o'clock in the morning and get my ashes, so I'm done for the day.
It is a conflict for you, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so let's look at that, uh, March fifth date.
Well, first of all, do you want it, do you wanna pick January eighth or January?
Or you want to go and see?
We should, we can.
Alright, so let's do January.
Do you think that that?
January, it works for me.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay, so January is a go.
Okay, alright, um.
February fifth?
Next holiday, or next date.
Let's go.
Go.
March, only the.
March fifth.
I'll be in Vietnam, so I will not be there.
Maybe I propose the twelfth as a subsidy.
Um, yeah, it's appropriate.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's for March fifth, it's the, the twelfth instead of the fifth?
Yes.
Yes.
What do we have?
Desert film.
Yeah.
Um in history.
They may have a concert, but.
Women history. So uh we have a com- so if if also if we pick a different date, we have to we have to meet at the library. And maybe we could meet other places, but we have a an evening program at that on the March twelve.
Oh, okay.
Um Deb, how long are you gone?
I'm back on the nineteenth.
Oh, my.
Yeah, it's all.
Oh, so you would miss the twelfth, us?
Yeah, I would miss March at this point.
Which we could do. Maybe we could do March sixth. If you're gonna miss already, we we could do March sixth, which is a Thursday. So I mean, you don't have.
Why would we change it?
Actually, David Norgard, it's Ash Wednesday.
I know you're a miss.
Better than duty.
Uh do you still wanted to maybe do March sixth and and then just not?
Five, there's no Ash Thursday as far as.
It's healthy.
We don't. We don't wanna mess with Mardi Gras, right?
March, we're saying the sixth.
And it's not a city. It's not. It's not a city council. It's it's a Thursday. So, yep.
Yeah, good.
Maybe.
Seconds ago. Okay, so.
Is it any other holidays?
The only person we're gonna be missing will be Deborah for that one.
Good.
Okay, April second.
Fine.
Okay, so that's a good. April second, May seventh.
Good.
Good. Day, June fourth.
Yep.
Good.
Okay. July second?
I don't know.
All right. You have an issue?
Not now, but I mean, it's typical that we're gone over that fourth holiday week.
Wednesday, fourth.
On Friday.
It's Friday. We're talking Wednesday. Well, let's say I'll be here for now.
You can always um do a couple of times a month or a couple of times a year. I think you can you can get a request to join virtually.
Oh, okay.
You know, if you could.
Okay.
I may need to join virtually on the fourth of June, but I don't have. I don't know for sure yet.
At least we'll have four of those years.
Yeah, we yeah, if we could. Three's a forum, so worst case, if there are people gone, it's not the end of the world.
Okay, so in August, we're.
We're dark.
So that brings us to September third. Okay, good. October first.
October is. Look at all of the things that are happening. And and the dates that I men- mentioned are no work dates type of thing. So October fourteenth, no, wait, October thirteenth is Indigenous Peoples' Day, so we're closed. Um October ninth, the the, you know, if you look at the the schedule, October ninth is a date that's available. That's city council. So we can't do city council.
Um.
Suggested sixteen.
I am.
Yeah.
Oh, it's adjusted sixteen.
So uh so then we would have a meeting on the sixteenth, and then we would have one on November fifth, which is pretty close together, but um.
Oh, with an option that cancels.
You could. Yeah, we can always. We don't have enough business. We can always cancel. There's no business meeting. We there's no.
Why don't we just keep it for the sixteenth?
Let's try for that. That one would have to. I say location to be determined. I I would say uh we'll try to say it's at the library. But at that point, we're gonna be right up in the middle of construction, so we'll have a temporary location.
So it might be the temporary.
Yeah, it maybe, yeah. Or we might have to find another location and then we would.
It can also be at the Wellwood possibly.
Oh, yes, that's right. The Wellwood has a has a nice meeting.
Is there a room big enough?
Yeah, it's big enough for the crowds.
The crowd. We might have some people walking down the streets.
Yeah, it is a street fair, Village Fest, yeah.
Go get a little dinner.
We've done it before, but yeah, you have to remember there is uh parking and navigating issue.
Okay, so we're gonna go with October sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and that brings us to November fifth, which is, well, it's fine. It's a conflict for anybody, but it could also be a meeting council. And December third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have all the changes?
Yes, and then you need to say, yeah, make a motion to adopt it as suggested.
March fifth was changed. Line was left span. We're going in fact over sixteen. Those are really hard to change.
In January.
Oh, January.
January. March sixth, October sixteen.
I'll adopt this. This looks a nice piece. Okay, can I have a motion that we accept, please?
Move to adopt the calendar for meeting of the meeting dates of the trustees in twenty twenty five as amended.
Second, please.
Second.
Person, second, all in favor?
Hi.
David, one upstairs.
Yep. Four, zero, one.
Okay.
Me too.
Where did?
Your library renovation.
Does everyone know what it is? Uh that would be Eugene, right?
So um just an update on the library renovation and temporary library location. We are um we just had a an initial meeting with our economic development department to talk about temporary library location. Uh we are creating uh uh like a wants and needs list of things to to look for in a commercial property. Uh we are also uh seeking donors of vacant property who might have a storefront or something or a warehouse, a climate controlled warehouse for us. Uh we love donations like that. That would be a wonderful uh civic duty. We are uh so we are just in the early stages of looking for temporary location. Uh we'll have to do tenant improvements and um set up our shelving and figure all of that out, what we're taking and all of that stuff. So we're at the right time. We're starting to look uh about the the library renovation. Our um architects just submitted to um the building department for building permit and uh going through plan check. So this is great. We're on target. Our timeline is still uh on task. We're we're things are doing uh great on that. And then uh today we got to uh look at finishes and carpet and tile and paint swatches and all those fun things. So we're getting into the fun stuff. So um question, please ask any questions. Yes.
Um concerning the temporary quarters, um are there some required parameters? Uh like within the city limits, for example?
Yes, yeah. So uh we're gonna set our preferred location. So I'm sorry, I cut you off, but.
Oh, that's all.
Yeah, um trying to keep something centrally located, um you know.
Parking.
Parking, ADA accessible, um air conditioning, restaurants. Yeah, so we're uh we are flexible. But um our economic development officer is gonna look, start start giving us some some ideas. And we're gonna start maybe looking at spaces just to get an idea of what what they look like, what's out there, so forth, and the costs involved. We do have some budget uh in our project for temporary location. Um I am a little worried about the costs because commercial space is very expensive. So we're gonna try to be very creative.
I have a question about the collection. Are you keeping a core collection and moving a lot into offsite storage and then calling it back? Or how are you gonna?
Actually, um we're gonna um create a core collection. And uh Julie called it a capsule collection. I like I like that because we have capsule workers. Uh we're gonna create a a core collection, just a smaller collection that we will take and we will use during the time. And we will also be buying uh new materials during that process. So we'll just have a smaller collection and then we'll put this uh the remainder in offsite storage that we won't access during the two years.
Oh, you won't access it at all?
Mm-mm. It's too too complicated to try to dig.
Yeah.
And um with the professional library movers, there there are such a thing. Uh they are extremely skilled at taking the items off the shelf and and keeping them in order. Can you imagine that the a hundred thousand items out of order? So they're they're so skilled at that, and they take it and they put it in in the boxes in a certain way. They everything other boxes are labeled and and then when we're time, it's time to move back, they put it back in order. And it's it's fascinating. So uh that's our plan. But we'll 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 pull out a core collection that we can take with us and then buy new stuff. It's wait, it'll be two years, so we'll we'll continue to buy new stuff along the way.
Yeah, of course.
Keep things going, but it'll be like a a real nice uh plug in quick. A real nice core uh li- like a like a popular library type collection. Yeah, don't lose our meeting.
Yes, David, just one other for me.
Though in terms of the temporary space besides the capsule collection, uh will there be any programs?
We hope. We're we're putting that in our preferred. Yeah, we're putting that in our preferred um. And uh Julie's also working on um like Plan B of uh partnerships with other groups, Mizel. Uh part where Parks and Rec is always our partner, but different, we have the different community centers. We have uh Mizel as a partner, um the center, the LGBTQ plus center, activating the Wellwood more frequently.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, Wellwood, Murray Memorial Library, our own our own facility, we're gonna we're we're gonna be activating that anyway. But we're um we beyond what we usually are. We're gonna increase the programs down there.
So I have a good question. So if you um can't find a location that's big enough, would you consider then having a couple of sites?
Maybe. It's uh it's not ideal, but uh I am, it's an option. Uh we're we can also uh we yeah, I I it's preferred to have a bigger location. We're not gonna have a full size library exactly like we have.
Right.
We're definitely gonna have a smaller site. Um we're also uh even now, we do outreach uh where our librarians go out, out. Uh we're gonna do that even more and have out, you know, take our outreach on the road, you know. Uh we go to Cielo Vista, we go to James O. Jesse now, and so we might do that even more. We'll have Rose Club. Oh, yeah, the Boys and Girls Club. We'll do Storytime at Wellwood. We'll do different things to stay active in the community and and keep keep everybody out there. Make sure people can get materials. We'll have computers at the at the temporary location. We might not have all the computers that we have now. There's, you know, it's just gonna be an outlet, like a hub. We've already been uh um the airport said, hey, you wanna work with us? And we've been wanting to work with them, so you know, maybe we'll work with the airport and.
That'd be cool.
Do stuff, you know, have a pop up there.
Yeah.
There's a lot of fun opportunities.
Yeah.
Or space, some new school district.
Um it's on my list. I did mention that because of where the alternative high school used to be, that property where they had the portables.
It's my next one. That property is being rented by College of the Desert.
All of it? Having a public discussion about private matters.
These are just suggestions.
Uh-huh.
So uh that space is being leased by C O D from the school district.
Uh-huh.
So there might be another contact. I don't know if they're using all of those portables. There's quite a few there. So that might be another option for storage.
Yeah, we have the um the navigation center has a ware- there's a warehouse that's not being used by the navigation center that's owned by the city, but it's not climate controlled. So we're we're going through the things. Yeah.
Any other comments or suggestions?
And our books have to be climate controlled. We cannot just put them in a storage container out in the desert. It's.
Oh, no.
That'd be ruined.
Yeah, that's why I was thinking of the C O D portables all.
Uh-huh. Yes. Yeah, so we'll have about seventy five thousand books that we've kind of put into storage, I think. It's what our our target.
I know you actually don't have to do it.
Oh, so uh the if the timeline sticks, which it should, things are going great right now. We're thinking about ramping down at the end of March. And then uh April will be transition, whether it's um uh opening a separate location and then, you know, shutting down, moving some of the staff and then shutting down and then packing it up. That's to be determined. We're still uh we're dependent upon that, the plan check and all of the progress and the bidding and the approval by city council and all of all of those things are. Yeah, but it's it's uh this is the fun part. We're getting to the good stuff.
Yeah, it's actually happening.
Yeah.
Uh Jeanie, oh, they gave checklist for the renovation. Are we still on time? All things we expect to have accomplished.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're.
So we're good.
Our timeline's good. We're doing. We're doing great. They're right on task. I mean, they said we expected to turn in our uh turn in for plan check on November first, and they said November first is a Friday. Said it's okay, you can you can submit online. They submitted online right on time. So, yeah, we're good. We're very excited.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks for that information. And I'm assuming this will be uh on the agenda for all of our upcoming.
Yeah, you all have requested that. So let's just leave it on there and give you an update every month. That's good for the public, too. They can they can watch it, watch and see.
We can start giving money to the foundation. Okay, uh let's go to Roman numeral age, uh committee reports, any reports from any of the committees?
No, I mean, the the uh I think Peter covered most of.
And then uh Nancy covered other things from the friends. Any other comments from trustees? Any more comments for staff? Hey, hearing none, meeting is adjourned.
Oh.
It turns.
Did we have anything else?
It's.
No? Okay, six twenty one.